Let's call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order. Can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice? Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Hometown Ace Hardware, and Milton Piggly Wiggly. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? We have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance. All right, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Do we have anybody signed in? Okay, Chief. Feel free.
And I really do appreciate the courtesy. This report reflects obviously year, the year end of 2024. So this is kind of the one that, that we certainly spend a lot of time looking at because it gives you a much better look at, at the year as a whole. There are some interesting things and there's at least one that, that caught me by surprise related to, to Milton. So I'll get that here in a second. 11.9% increase year over year, pretty consistent, right? We were in that double-digit increase throughout the, the course of the year. 17% on fire, I mean, we did have. And I don't know that we understand any kind of driver behind that. Just kind of an anomaly of a year that we had several fires. For Milton as a city from a, a call volume standpoint, if you kind of looked in the blue call out, you'll see the, the one that caught me by surprise. Twenty fi- 20.5% year-over-year increase in 911 incidents in the city of Milton. And I don't know, Chief, if this, I, I don't know where you're running from activity level. We can't point to a single driver behind that other than you are certainly growing, right? The, the growth in the industrial park, the people that come along with that, the employees, the residential growth, just, just activity in general, right? You're, you're a very vibrant and growing community. 20% caught me by surprise. I, I didn't see that one coming. So we'll kind of see, we'll, we'll watch that one and I'll try to keep you up to date as we move through 25. Obviously, we feel good about the fact that the plan to get the two stations, right? The, the Milton East, the very first one that'll come online, and the new ones. It, it is certainly warranted at this point. You know, we, we saw it coming and this is kind of validation of, of what's going on. Fire prevention activity, the only thing I'm going to comment on, and again, Paul probably well aware and most of you, especially those of you on your planning and zoning and, and those committees, you've got some huge growth coming in the industrial park. We're, we're looking at Prince and working with DSPS on some very, very large buildings, which is a good thing for, you know, it's exactly what you're trying to do out there, so. But I know everybody's kind of huffing and puffing, keeping up with what's coming at them. Staffing, we are, I almost, I'm afraid to even say it, we are doing extremely well. We are, we're staying stable. There is always the, the coming and going here or there, right? But staffing is stable. The Western Division did approve the three additional staff, starting in 2025. We're going to phase them in over 2025. We have 12 applicants for the three positions, which it, it, we feel really good about that, right? It goes along with the reputation of what we're building and the department and where we're trying to go, that we've got people who generally want to come. So that is a really, really good thing. Pluses and minuses. Financial on the back, we, we ended, God forbid, very close to what we thought we were going to. We kept thinking it was going to get better near the end of the year and it didn't. Obviously, the activity just didn't slow down or anything. I, I, to every one of our Eastern municipalities, same exact quote I've used all year long, this is a West problem. The East is absolutely stable. In fact, you had, you were a little bit under the financial projections for the East. That issue of being, you know, behind all year long financially does get addressed. The West has agreed to $174,000 increase in 2025, and then an additional 100 and something or other, another 120 after that in '26. So we expect 2025 financially to look a lot more like we like green on the piece of paper, not red. The AR and the billing issues, nothing new there. I, I think I talked about the Avonik tabletop exercise, yeah, we did, last month. So I don't need to relive that. Lot of certifications come in at the end of the year. People were taking classes throughout the course of the year, both our career, part-time paid-on-call personnel, really proud of them for doing that. The engine that was struck out on the interstate, if you want a, just a sobering fact, repairs to that vehicle right now are in excess of $100,000. So the insurance carrier is kind of seriously looking at it going, you know, is this worth replacing or, or not? Or not, not replacing, repairing or not. The issue with not repairing it is that if we did in fact, you know, close it out and replace it, fire engines are three years out to, to be able to get a new engine. Again, you guys all kind of know how this works. Yes, there are manufacturers that have demo models that, you know, we could say, hey, we need this in two weeks and they'd gladly sell it to us, but we'd end up with a vehicle that didn't match what we would need for our kind of department. We'd get a, basically a demo model off the line. Given the rural area that we cover, I mean, we, we, our trucks are designed very specifically for large water movement in rural areas because that's a huge part of what we do. So you got to be careful of just grabbing one off the showroom floor. It usually doesn't work out well. So, working on that one. The comment I've made obviously to everybody, that truck did exactly what it was designed to do, right? I mean, had that vehicle at 70-plus miles an hour slammed into the back of that ambulance with a patient in the back of the ambulance, we'd have had a lot of worse problems. So, I mean, it did exactly what it was designed to do. Just kind of a interesting lesson learned. Building off of that, we've had some conversations with the State Department of Transportation, you guys are probably familiar with. They call them attenuator trucks. They are basically those trucks with the big, they look like bumpers in the back that highway departments have. So they get out there, they drop it down, and it protects the workers, the highway workers. I'm not suggesting we want to buy one, right, in terms of out of our tax base, right? Because we don't get a lot of, you guys don't get a lot of tax base off of the interstate. But I had a long conversation with the second-in-charge of the Department of Transportation. They are seriously looking for some federal or state safety grant money for us to see if, if they could put one together and actually buy one. So that, that is what could go out onto the interstate along with the ambulances or whatever versus a, you know, half a million or three-quarters of a million-dollar fire truck. So again, that, and most of you know, we've had a phenomenal relationship with DOT through the years, and I think it just reflects it. They, they understand what we're asking and they're trying to help us. Two things on the fire station projects. Appreciate Teresa's time earlier this week. We are working on kind of an informational session where the building committee and Teresa has been deeply, deeply involved in that for over two years now, right? We are putting together a little bit of an information session because we're at that point where we've got a pretty good idea what this looks like, what the costs or relative costs might be, so we're working on that, and you'll get more information on that. But the construction manager, RFP, is actually on the street right now. Went out to about 12 different potential bidders. We know that there is a tremendous amount of interest in that project by them, right? That's, it's, this is a cool project that they're going to want to be part of. Those bids are due back on February 3rd. And we have a committee put together already that will review those bids. The oral interviews for the, probably the top three or four candidates will be the week after. So what would that be, February 10th roughly? And we'll have the construction manager on, onboard by the middle of February. Apologize for kind of a long report, right? But any questions or anything? Fed, we were talking to Paul. We had a structure fire in our territory two nights ago. It's always entertaining when you look at a guy that is just basically encapsulated in ice, walking around. It was a garage fire, thank heavens, did not extend to the house. But it was in the attics, all right? Everybody that was fighting the fire, the water would go up and then come right back down over the top of them and they, they. And then we were mutilated to whitewater today. They had a pretty serious house fire. But yeah, this is, it's, and again, the, the chief can attest, these are really brutal days and nights for our staff. And we really give them a lot of credit for what they do. All I got.
Thank you. Any questions?
Wish you a very happy.
See you later this week. Stay warm.
Later this week, not later tonight, right? Take care.
No, no. Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a conditional use permit request for 282 Northside Drive.
Joshua and Opala Billhorn have requested a conditional use permit to operate a home occupation out of the residence at 282 Northside Drive. Home occupations, home businesses require a conditional use permit within residential zone districts. The subject site at 282 Northside Drive is Zoned R3. The Billhorns would like to operate Opala's music studio out of their home. The studio would focus on private one-on-one lessons. They'd have no signage and provide parking either on their driveway or on the street. There's no fiscal impact to the city of Milton for the conditional use permit request. Senate Administration recommends approval of the conditional use permit request for Joshua and Opala Billhorn. And the planning here in, excuse me, the planning commission did have a public hearing and did forward a favorable recommendation to approve that CUP.
Any questions or comments?
I'd move approval of the conditional use permit for 282 Northside Drive.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Congratulations. You can go home now. To a warm house. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 2025-553, rezone 876 Chapel Drive from R4 to PUD.
HWC Holdings LLC, owners of the subject site at 876 Chapel Drive, have requested the rezoning of 1.5 acres from R4 to PUD. The rezoning request corresponds with their potential development plans for the site. A general development plan is attached. The owners of the land intend to construct a 20-unit apartment building on their site, which currently has an eight-unit apartment building. The attached general development plan shows the layout of the 20-unit building. The PUD is a specific zoning district within the city zoning code. The purpose of the PUD is to encourage and promote improved environmental design by allowing for greater freedom, imagination, and flexibility in the development of land while ensuring substantial compliance to the basic intent of the zoning code and the comprehensive plan. To this intent, PUD allows diversification and variation in relationship of uses, structures, open spaces, heights of structures and developments conceived and implemented as a comprehensive and cohesive unified project. It's further intended to encourage more rational economic development with relation to public service and to encourage and facilitate the preservation of open space. A key issues per PUD approval is criteria for approval, Section 78-465. The character and intensity of the land use, this meets the requirement of the code. Economic feasibility and impact meets the requirement of the code. Engineering design standards meet the requirement of the code. Preservation and maintenance of open space meets the requirement of the code. And the implementation schedule meets the requirements of the code. City Administration believes the developer has addressed the requirements of Section 78-465 and 78-466 and is petitioned to rezone to a new PUD designation. Fiscal impact, the city of Milton would see increased assessments on the property with this development. Recommended motion, that was also approved by the Planning Commission, and they recommended that motion as well. City Administration recommends approval of ordinance 2025-553, rezoning of 876 Chapel Drive from R4 to PUD with the following conditions from the City Engineer and Fire Department. Geotechnical design of the proposed retaining wall is required. Stormwater management facilities are required per Chapter 10, Article 7, Division 2, Post-Construction Stormwater Management of the Municipal Code. Abandon existing water service to the property while making new connection that will require the removal and replacement of a short piece of water main pipe so the connection doesn't need to be a live tap. Relay the exist- existing clay sanitary sewer lateral to the manhole with PVC or ductile or iron pipe and placing of sprinklers in the attic spaces and on exterior rear balcony if installed.
Any questions or any comments? And you can approve and waive the second and third as an option.
So I'll make a motion to approve the first reading, waive the second and third reading, and adopt ordinance 2025-553 with the following, the conditions that were stated by the City Engineer and Fire Department.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action on ordinance 2025-554 and ordinance to a comprehensive plan.
The city, the city last year received a request to rezone a 12 merchant row from B3 Central Business District to R3 Residential District 3. In order to rezone that property, the city needs to modify the comprehensive plan, future land use map. The property at 12 Merchant Row was originally constructed as a single-family home and has most recently functioned as both a business location and a residence. Ms. Hanson, the current resident, has lived in the building since 2016 and serves as her family's primary residence. The property is adjacent to other residential homes within the B3 zoning district. The, this parcel is indicated as commercial in our comprehensive plan, future land use map. In order to rezone the parcel, the city needs to amend the future land use map. The Planning Commission is recommending the rezoning in its past Resolution 2024-20, recommending that the common council to make the necessary amendment to the comprehensive land use map. There's no fiscal impact for this rezoning. And Administration recommends approval of ordinance number 2025-554. As a reminder, the council, if they so choose, can approve on the first reading and waive the second and third readings if they so choose.
Questions or comments or a motion?
I move to approve on the first reading, waive the second and third readings for approval of ordinance 2025-554.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 2025-555 and ordinance rezoning property in the city.
This ordinance would actually rezone that property now. The property at 12 Merchant Row, as I said, was originally constructed as a single-family home and has most recently functioned as both a business location and a residence. Ms. Hanson, the current resident, has lived there since 2016 and serves as her family's primary residence. The property is adjacent to other residential homes within the B3 zoning district. This rezoning request was presented at a pre-conference meeting before the Plan Commission on May 4th, 2021, where Commission approved a motion for the applicant to move forward with the rezoning process. During that meeting, the applicant was informed that the rezoning is, if the rezoning is improved, business operations would no longer be permitted on the property unless a conditional use permit is obtained in the future. On November 19th, 2024, Plan Commission held a public hearing on the rezone request for 12 Merchant Row from B3 Central Business District to R3 Residential District 3. The Planning Commission has made a favorable, favorable recommendation for the rezoning. There's no impact in this rezoning. Administration recommends approval of ordinance 2025-555, an ordinance rezoning property in the city of Milton. Again, if the council so chooses, they can approve on the first reading and waive the second and third reading.
Questions or comments or a motion?
I'd move approval of the first reading of ordinance 2025-555, waive the second and third reading and adopt.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action declaring public works and utility items as surplus. Yes, and then you three all have to stand up there when we do team building too.
I'll work on that. All right, so can we hear you now? Public Works Department requesting authorization to declare two items as surplus. There's a 1995 International Patrol Truck and Plow. That's one of our snow plows. It's the oldest one that we have in the fleet, as well as a 2011 International Sewervac Truck. Council Policy Number 5 requires any item with an estimated value of over $2,000 to have common council approval to be declared surplus. Recently, the Public Works Department acquired a used 2007 Snowplow Truck from Wisconsin Surplus for just over $18,000. The replacement vehicle included a plow, a wing, salting, and pre-wet brining equipment that will allow for more efficient snow removal and salting operations and will replace a different truck in the fleet. The vehicle that is going to be disposed of is currently used as a brine truck and will be replaced by the vehicle that the 2007 unit is replacing. We have also obtained quotes for new plow trucks and they've ranged from $245 to up over $350,000. So that's why we started looking in alternative directions to reduce the age of the fleet and increase the efficiency of our operations. Purchase of the new Sewervac Truck was recently approved and will be delivered sometime in the first quarter. So that's the reason that we would request disposal of the existing VAC truck and disposal of that item will not occur until the new equipment is received. Upon sale of the items, any revenues received for the snowplow would be returned to the general fund and revenues received for the Sewervac would be distributed proportionally to the sewer, water, and stormwater utility at the ratio used to purchase the replacement equipment. Staff is requesting a motion to authorize us to use Wisconsin Surplus process to dispose of the listed items.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move to authorize staff to use the Wisconsin Surplus auction to process the listed items.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, discussion and possible action regarding ATV ordinance update. As an attachment, you have the ATV law incident summary report. Chief, did you want to have some comments?
Certainly. So this data was collected once we started issuing citations and making traffic stops on ATVs, UTVs in the city of Milton. Once it passed, once the appropriate signage was up in the city, as you can see, most of the incidents were minor. It doesn't break down the clearance codes for citation issued and discuss what the citations were. But I had asked our support services manager to pull through those and most of them were equipment-related or where operators are failing to give signal. There wasn't anything related to speed or reckless driving or failure to have children in safety helmets or anything like that. So there were no egregious violations that have occurred with UTVs and ATVs. Most of them were minor incident reports where officers were giving warnings for violations or stemmed from registration issues if a citation was issued or no insurance on a vehicle or not having their registration displayed. So minor issues with that. And most of them, most of the contacts stopped in the beginning part of, excuse me, November just due to the colder weather conditions. There was an initial surge of traffic with ATVs, UTVs once the law or the ordinance passed in the city, but after the first month, the traffic volume really kind of fizzled. My anticipation is once the town of Milton does, if they do pass their ordinance related to ATV, UTV operation, then we'll see another surge again of traffic and uptick with contacts and obviously with better weather too. But right now, since we're isolated, since no surrounding jurisdictions have the authorization for ATV, UTV operation, we're limited to what's already in the city. So, and obviously these, if you don't already own one there, bless you, quite expensive. So with that too, if somebody is interested in purchasing one down the road, it might take a little while for them to accumulate that to see if it's worthwhile to pursue that operation in the city. But I'm pleased with the, I guess, lack of our activity involving ATVs, UTVs. There have been real no iss- really no issues and everybody has been really compliant for those that did have registration or equipment-related issues in correcting that because there was a big lapse, or should I say gap, with the education and knowledge of what the ordinance entailed. So most of the contacts were education because people just didn't know what the requirements were and kind of thought it was do what you please with ATVs and UTVs without following laws, giving signals, needing registration and that sort of thing. So towards the tail end, before the activity kind of died off in the city, the, you could just tell people were, that those that were operating began to understand the guidelines. We fielded a lot of calls between myself, Deputy Chief Chesmore, the patrol staff, educating the public on the requirements in addition to what was already posted on the city website as well and all the informational hearings and sessions leading up to that. So I would anticipate another uptick in spring with activity for those that are new with the vehicles and that sort of thing. But so far, it's been just fine.
Do we know, and I understand if we don't know this, if the, if the clubs are actually letting their riders know what the ordinances say because they were very instrumental and very vocal in supporting this? And I'm just curious if we know. I, I mean, I, I feel like it's not just on us to educate people, but I'm just curious as to what kind of education is happening.
I, I don't recall the president of the Rock River, Rock County Crawlers Club, but he reached out to me a few months after the ordinance took effect and operation was legal and he was kind of doing like a status check, what the activity was like, if we had to run into any issues. I told him there weren't anything major as I just presented. And he too, at the onset though, asked for some information and I shared with him the general information that was on the city website with that handy flyer, so he pushed that out. But most of those people though too, that are in the club itself, are pretty well informed of the requirements and they knew what was on the line too with this passage of the ordinance and the Sunset Clause with it. So they knew they didn't want to risk having it come to an end because of their hobby that they enjoyed doing with it. So that was the least worry I had with the operation because of the people that were in the group. They're usually more informed and aware of all the laws. It's the people that. that probably aren't in it that probably needed a reminder of what that entailed.
Okay, thanks. Ken?
Do you know how much the breakdown of, how much of this was self-initiated field activity as opposed to citizen calls for service?
The, everything that was generated on here was officer-initiated except for the two incidents that were reported for their clearance code of gone on arrival. So that may have been a ATV, UTV, maybe parked in an area that they shouldn't have been parked, or failing to stop for a stop sign. I know we got several complaints at the intersection of High and Gateway, I believe, where ATV, UTVs were rolling through that intersection. So that, I do recall, may have been one where the officer arrived, didn't see the vehicle, sat there, still didn't see it, and we had nothing further to follow up with that. But everything else was officer-initiated.
And is there any action that's required of the council tonight?
This report was, well, at a request when the original ordinance was approved, as can the report be presented to the council within six months.
And is it, do we have to renew the ordinance?
I do not believe it needs to be renewed. This was just a status report, and then if there were no other major incidents that would have interfered with the safe effective, or safe usage of ATVs, UTVs, it would just take effect then after a year of passage unless council revisits down the road. And it would be my intent to give another report to the council prior to that time.
Okay, alright.
Unless City Clerk Salvo has anything else to add.
I need to review the ordinance. I thought there was a sunset clause in it.
Was that a full year, though?
Yeah, not at the six-month mark.
Right.
It was at the year, I believe, but I have to review that.
Okay. Anything else for anyone? Okay, and discussion and possible action regarding the nonprofit contribution policy. Did Charlotte want us to table this, too, or just?
She did not ask for table.
So this was re, Ryan, you had requested this, and I'm wondering if you, if council wants to act on it tonight, or they want to table it till Charlotte?
Actually, I was gonna suggest to table it till Charlotte is, is back, because I think what suggested, what started the whole process of wanting to re-review it was some comments Charlotte made and some questions she had on it. So I think it would be a good idea to wait till she's back, just so she has input, too.
Sure. Is there a motion, then?
I'd move that we postpone this until...
The next meeting in February.
Next meeting in February.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. And then Charlotte is not able to be here and did ask if council would consider delaying discussion and possible action regarding special event permits, and so that's for your consideration.
I'll make a motion to table the discussion possible action regarding special event permits.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting, yep.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. General items for anyone? Committee reports?
Historic preservation meets tomorrow.
And CDA met last week, and that was in Paul's update, and we got a presentation, Visit Milton, but that's not, the Janesville Tourism Committee, is that what it's called? And that was a good presentation. That's an update from CDA. Do you have anything else from CDA? Anyone?
Besides that, there wasn't much else.
Any other committee reports anyone wants to share?
DPW, Public Works will be meeting the 27th, so we'll have a report next time.
Okay, staff reports. Chief?
Kick things up. I was in contact with a lady with the Southeast Wisconsin Autism Society, and she rolled out some training gear specifically for law enforcement. So all of our staff completed that towards the end of December, and with that, they provided us with some basically kits for our squad cars. So each squad car could be set up with a sensory kit, stuff for those individuals with autism to kind of help keep them on track without us having to interfere with them and keep them calm and collected while we either, if they're a victim or a witness or just part of the incident. So that was another benefit to, it was another benefit. That was free, so always win-win with that, and beneficial training. And I had, previously had some training like that, so it was just a good refresher for me personally. Still waiting the new squad builds. Those should have been started. Everything else is on track for those to be hopefully rolled out by like March-ish. Officer Craig Quarter is also on track to finish field training on time, so no issues with that so far. I think they all want to kick them out now, too, but I want to make sure we're good. And Nick Moore has completed the first week of the academy, no issues. He's still gainfully employed with us, so I'm pleased to report back to the council with that. Otherwise, there's nothing else activity-wise with the PD that's worth sharing.
Thank you. Library?
Chief did provide some active training, active threat training for staff last week, so that was great. Kind of, we did a little walkthrough of the library and different access points. And then we just have our annual community survey available right now through the end of the month. It's for people that can kind of give feedback on how they used the library in the last 12 months, and we use that information on strategic planning and making changes. So that's available on our website, on our social media. It's in the utility bill newsletter as well.
Thank you. DPW? Eke the mic and start singing.
We held a public information meeting last week for the 2025 Street Improvements Project. That's Woodland Drive, Forest Lake, Ivanhoe, and Suri Drive. There was a good turnout. Are you okay?
I hear the buzz?
I don't hear it.
It's better now.
I really apologize for all the technical difficulties I'm having tonight. But we got a really good turnout. A lot of folks attended. Good discussions, probably have updates at the next meeting for that. And then, other than that, I guess we did have a discussion with DOT about a possible grant opportunity for a project along Madison Avenue, which we'll get further details later on that. Otherwise, nothing further for me.
Hand the mic to Kelsey.
I don't have too much of an update this time, just working through 2024 year-end and financials. It's wrapping up and working on getting audit material complete for the audit the second week in March.
It seems like we just went through that. Jenny?
I have a few things. First, we were aware of some technological issues over on that side of the room, that they were, worked great for Plan Commission earlier, but not, not now, but it is scheduled after the 24th, January 24th for someone to come in and...
Must be an operator error.
Someone provide training.
No comments, no comments. But, but yes, that is in the works. And so then, also for the ATV, I did verify the sunset provision says that it is, the ordinance is modified herein, shall terminate one year after adoption unless extended by the Common Council. So after the full year, it will need to be extended. So I have that. And then we do have an election coming up on February 18th, beginning of, literally, January 2nd. I ordered the Badger books, so those are expected to be here, and we have training for our election staff at the end of January, so we're excited to see how those work.
And Paul?
Continuing to work with developers. Did send out our RFP for comprehensive plan update to over 10 engineering firms that would be able to assist us on that, as well as Jenny assisted me on putting those on some public forums to get that information out to other engineers that can assist us. Should have some things for us, the council to review in the next, next month.
I did have an announcement. Tomorrow evening, so Wednesday evening, the county will be hosting a meet and greet for the three candidates, finalists for the county administrator's post. That will be held at 6:00 PM at the Dr. Daniel Hale Williams Human Services Building on Center Avenue. Public is welcome.
Eric will be attending on my behalf. Anything else for anyone? Ready for team building? Okay, so the team building exercise is what recommendations do you have for us for a book to read, a movie to see, or something to stream for 2025? Not anything that you've already done or we're expecting, or, you don't have to have done this already in 2025, but what are some things we can all put on our list to do when it's freezing cold and, you know, we still have a few weeks of winter left?
Wheel of Time.
Wheel of Time?
Yep.
Okay, book?
Streaming, and book is great, too. The book is actually fantastic.
Which streaming do we need to?
That would be Amazon Prime.
Amazon Prime.
But for an alternative book suggestion, David Copperfield.
Okay, very good.
I read Ice Cold Leader. It's more of like a leadership sort of emotional intelligence book through with a few people at work, and it's really good. Good things in your personal life and business, team building sort of skills.
Thank you.
Got a favorite author with a favorite subject that is come out, Ron Chernow, who is the author of a lot of historical biographies, including Hamilton, the book that the Broadway show was sort of loosely based on. And Chernow actually also acted as the technical advisor on Hamilton. But Chernow has written a lot of great biographies. There's a new biography of Mark Twain that Chernow has come out with, so one of my favorite subjects and one of my favorite authors, and I'm looking forward to reading that one.
I have The Woman by Kristen Hannah. And guys, don't let the title throw you off. This is actually a woman that had fought in the Vietnam War and then how it affected her life. It really is a very good book.
This was recommended to me by several family members this winter over Christmas. The Devil in the White City. It's a, it's a historical fiction piece about the World's Fair in Chicago back in 1893, and follows the architect that helped develop the World's Fair, and it also follows H.H. Holmes, who's a criminal figure widely considered the first serial killer in the United States. So it kind of follows both those courses as they intersect.
I'll go a different path on the books than the rest of you guys. Any Lee Child, Jack Reacher series are my favorites. I like trash, and that's just a fun, easy read. You're not going to sit there and get a lot from it.
My phone just did that.
Sure. You're recording on top of the recording?
Wow, that's just weird. Look at you got red.
Is that in your leadership book, too?
That was, that was ice cold.
Ken, anything else before, you were so disrespectfully disruptive.
I would recommend Anything by James Baldwin, and also All the Light We Cannot See are good, really good.
I'll go over here if this one's working. Is it working? I'm gonna switch off books and go with movies and Wicked. We watched it this weekend finally, and it was really good, so.
Awesome.
Wicked.
Wicked. Mark, did you want to grab that mic since it's right by you? And, and it's working.
I, I am also looking forward to Wheel of Time, but I think Stranger Things also comes out this year, too. So that's kind of what I'm looking forward to.
I have to second both The Women and All the Light We Cannot See. Those are both fantastic. I read a lot of military history, but my recommendation actually is Alaska by James Michener. I have just recently started working through Michener's works, and the historical information he provides in a very readable fashion is outstanding. They're really long books, but really good.
Yeah, thanks. Anyone else? Who are we waiting for? The librarian doesn't do any reading, so we'll pass her. No, Chief?
I've gathered I need to read more based on everybody's recommendations. I would recommend Extreme Ownership if anybody hasn't dabbled in that one by Jaco Willink and Leif Beben. It's a good book, and I think people are often surprised when, at least in my experience, when people take accountability and say, yep, buck stops with me. It's kind of refreshing, at least for me, and surprising when people are like, oh, well, I appreciate that despite you guys being at fault or whatever the circumstances are. It's kind of refreshing. But they also have, Jaco Willink started a company, a training company called Echelon Front. They do presentations worldwide on leadership, which complements a lot of their publications. So if you ever have the opportunity or come across Echelon Front, it's very costly typically, but if you have an opportunity to see them, it's very beneficial. So that, and also Step Brothers 2 is coming out in 2025.
We're gonna need some, some comedies for sure. And I really, I really like that book a lot, and I got the workbook. So have you read that, Eric?
Yes.
This is my alarm, telling me to go home. I can't set it off. I don't know how to set it off. There we go. Okay, alright, alright. The screen wouldn't come up.
I'm trying to come up with something good and inspirational, but right now, the, for streaming, this is, this is interesting, is I am not, have not watched a lot of the Taylor Sheridan shows. And a close family member this weekend really wanted to watch Landman. I am absolutely obsessed with that now, and it is really interesting, and so I had to dig a little deeper into the oil industry in general, so I thought it was very interesting.
Which one is that streaming?
Paramount Plus.
Very good, because I was actually gonna start watching that tonight.
Yes, I highly recommend.
It's good. It's really good.
And Ed won't watch it, so she's out of town, so I'm gonna go.
Ashley?
I just, I struggled all of last year to sit down and read a book, but I finally listened to the audiobook of The House in Cerulean Sea and absolutely loved it so much. So I'm reading the second book right now, but highly recommend Anything by him, by T.J. Klune.
Thank you. Did we get everybody? Yes.
Some of us actually remember that night.
Some people probably weren't even born that night.
Much less being old enough to stay up to watch it.
That's right.
And you're old enough to figure that what they were doing was great.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone. Our next meeting is February 4th. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're adjourned. Anyone opposed? We're adjourned.